All righty, good evening, everybody. Ready to call to order our joint meeting of the City Council's successor agency to the redevelopment agency, Public Finance Authority, the Public Utility Authority, Housing Authority, Paris Joint Powers Authority, and the Paris Community Economic Development Corporation of the City of Paris this Tuesday, September 30, 2025, at 6:33 PM. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vallejo?
Here.
Councilmember Navas?
Present.
Councilmember Corona?
Present.
Mayor Protimrab?
Here.
Mayor Vargas?
Present, thank you. Item three is our invocation, which will be led by Pastor Don Meunberg from the Reflections Christian Fellowship. Come on up, Pastor. If you'd all please stand and join us, and then remain standing for item four, which is our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Vallejo.
I'd ask you to please bow, bow your heads, close your eyes, and let's give this time to the Lord. Dear Heavenly Father, first of all, we thank you so much, Lord, for all your blessings, and for the opportunity for all of us to be here today. We thank you, Lord, for bringing all these leaders here to this place in order for them to express their thoughts, ideas, and decisions in leading your people here in the city of Paris. Lord, as we look around this nation and this world, we see wars, we see senseless killings, crime everywhere, and huge division among people. It all seems so hopeless. But, Lord, we know that you are in control of all things, and we put all our trust in you. Lord, we also recognize that the city of Paris is your city, and you want only the best for all the people that live here. So I ask you, Lord, to give each council member and city staff the wisdom and discernment to lead our city down your righteous path that you have already planned for us from the beginning. The Bible teaches us in 1 Corinthians 11:1 through the Apostle Paul to follow his example as he follows the example of you. This is what we desire from our city leaders here in Paris. Let their voices and decisions be pleasing to you in a way that brings blessings to this wonderful city of Paris. Since the Charlie Kirk assassination, we have seen Christian revivals all over this nation honoring and worshiping you, and, Lord, we pray also for that same revival in your city of Paris that completely turns to you for hope and peace. Lastly, Lord, we ask you to bless each city leader and staff member here tonight. And, Lord, I pray that this council meeting is guided by you, and through it all, you will be glorified and praised. Lord, we love you with everything we are, and we honor and praise you in the powerful and most precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every fear and justice.
I have to say, go Dodgers. All right, thank you, Pastor. Item five is a report on closed session items. Attorney Soltani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1 in three cases. No reportable action was taken. The council met pursuant to the same code section subsection D2. One potential litigation case, no reportable action was taken. Council met pursuant to government code section 54956.8 regarding real property negotiations, no reportable action was taken. And lastly, the council met pursuant to government code section 54957 for public employee evaluation, and no reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six is presentation and announcements. Six A is a presentation of a proclamation and recognition of the 75th anniversary of Eastern Municipal Water District. We do have a member from the water district here who would like to speak first. Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas, council members. I'm Nick Kanes, Deputy General Manager with the Eastern Municipal Water District. I really just want to say thank you for inviting me here to receive this proclamation and recognition of Eastern Municipal Water District's 75 years in service. Just want to say that we are extremely proud of the 75 years that we have served our community with safe, reliable, and economical water, wastewater services, and we're also extremely proud of the fabulous working relationship that we've had with the city of Paris in doing just that. So again, thank you for your recognition. On behalf of our board of directors, they thank you and appreciate this as well.
Thank you, Nick. We're going to go ahead and step down. We'll present you with the proclamation and grab a photo while we're there. All righty, do you want me to read this all out? So let it be known, therefore, be it resolved, that the Office of the Mayor and the City Council hereby recognizes and celebrates Eastern Municipal Water for their 75 years of service in delivering safe and reliable water, wastewater, and recycled water services, presented on this 30th day of September, 2025. Ask for a cup of water or something? Nick, thank you very much for stopping by. Say hi to everybody at Eastern Municipal, and congratulations on the 75 years. All right, item seven is our Youth Advisory Committee communication. This report will be given by Amy Reynoso, our Vice President.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council and city staff. My name is Amy Reynoso, and I am honored to serve as the 2025 to 2026 Vice President of the Youth Advisory Committee. I'd like to take a moment to share a few exciting updates about our upcoming events. First, October, our October Open Mic Night will take place this Friday, October 3, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We invite the youth to join us for a fun and inspiring evening filled with music, poetry, and creative expression. Our next YAC meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 7, from 5:00 PM to 5:30 PM at Morgan Park in conjunction with the National Night Out event. We encourage everyone to come out, connect with neighbors, and meet our local first responders. On Saturday, October 11, we are proud to be assisting with the SoCal Special Olympics and the Paris Big League Dreams. We look forward to supporting this incredible event and its amazing athletes. We're also excited to announce our annual trunk-or-treat, happening on Friday, October 24, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the Statler Youth Centers parking lot. It is always a great time for families to enjoy a safe and festive Halloween celebration. As always, we encourage the community to stay safe, stay engaged, and stay connected. For the latest updates on our programs and events, be sure to follow us on social media @ParisYAC. Thank you for your time and your continued support. We truly value your partnership in making Paris a vibrant and welcoming place for youth and families. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item eight is our public comment. This is a time when any member of the public may bring any matter to the attention of the mayor. I should say, bring a matter to the attention of the mayor and the city council that is within our jurisdiction of the city council. You'll allow for three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, sir. Rosalinda Rivas?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Vargas, our council members, our city staff members, and the community at large that's here today. It's great representation today. It just shows the commitment everybody has. I'm Rosalinda Rivas. I'm on the Board of Director with the Paris Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank you for the opportunity and to provide you with an update of the chamber's work and support of our business community and our youth that we've been doing. I'd like to share some exciting news in regards to what we did this month with the youth. Our Paris Forward Foundation officially launched its Civics in Action workshop this month, and that was with our Youth Advisory Committee. There was more than 40 high school students that were part of this. There was an inauguration session that took place. They got to engage with a lot of civic leaders, learning how they can use their voice and action, and be a real direct impact to our city, and learn what the process is. It was really positive. Another thing we want to share about that is that this is going to be a quarterly project that we're going to be doing, and it's going to reach hundreds of Paris youth equipped to give them the knowledge, the leadership skills, and the confidence, and basically to empower them so that they can shape the future of our city. The chamber also, aside from working with the youth, is working with our businesses to create a lot of networking and community celebrations. There are three events coming up this month in October. The first one is going to be on October 8. That's our Good Morning Paris. Hopefully, we'll get to see all of you and everybody watching, and everybody here. And we'll have Dr. Rudy Besikov, our President of Moreno Valley College. He'll be sharing some insights on education, equity, and opportunities for collaboration with our Paris community. On October 15, save the date, we have our Business After Five mixer. That's exciting because we've got Chick-fil-A there. They're our Champion Circle member. They're going to be providing the wonderful meals and treats with the chicken, and also we'll have some live entertainment from our own Paris Mariachi Luceros. And we'll be celebrating our Hispanic Heritage Month. On, let's see, October 23, we have Lunch with Friends. This is a membership appreciation barbecue, so bring your appetite, bring your smile. It's a great way to connect. It'll be free lunch for our sheriffs and deputies and staff to show our gratitude for their service, and all guests and members that'll be there will be able to enjoy in the participation of our barbecue, so come join us. This is a great way to have fellowship and strengthen our business partnership. In addition, there's three ribbon cutties that have three ribbon cuttings that have taken place this month, and it just shows the reflection of our growth and promises that Paris holds here at the city. We're not just about business, but we're also about showing how our businesses are truly thriving, and it's really a community partnership that the city and our committee and our employers do. The last thing I want to share is that our chamber is really committed to our strong partnership, and we appreciate the city for supporting our businesses, investing in our youth, and together, we're building a brighter future for Paris. So, on behalf of our President, Jerri Saupulveda, and all the board members of the Paris Valley Chamber, and myself, we want to thank you, Honorable Mayor Vargas, all our council members that are here, our city staff members, and the community at large here today. Thank you for your...
Thank you, Rosalita.
Alfredo Adriano?
How you doing? I'm not really eloquent, so you'll have to put up with my inacquaintances right now. I want to talk something about FEMA. I've talked to several people in the building, the safety department, and they've shifted me from one person to another. And I just want to put this to the people of Paris, I guess, because I live here. What are you guys going to do with people after one week of a disaster? Think hard on that. They gave me a book I read, it's just for two or three days. Bit of a real disaster, what are you going to do? People my age, disabled, what are you going to do with us? I want to really challenge you to use FEMA, okay? Get those grants in, you know, find... FEMA does so much. I keep reading on them. I've got about 50% of the material that I've read, and there's still so much more to read, but it sounds like they would help a community like this build in case something happens. Okay? What do you do when something happens? You have food supplies, you have water supplies, you have emergency aids. Now, I'm saying to, you know, maybe get the churches, some of the schools, some of the city properties, plant edible trees, moringa trees. I've got three growing in my yard right now. Don't ask me for my address. Okay? They have pods like this big with seeds in them. You eat them. You eat the bark. You eat the leaves. They're used in third-world countries everywhere. That's just moringa. That's just one item. But you could put, you know, in a small area, 10 by 70, on all properties all over Paris, and you have emergency food supplies. And I've got a bunch of ideas on how to, you know, keep them maintained and stuff, very, very, very simple, nothing hard. But I just wish the community would pay attention. I didn't get threatened by a neighbor, but he saw me filling jugs up with water one day, and I said, "Hey, do you fill up anything for an emergency?" He says, "No, I'm going to steal them from you." You know? And I thought about it. That was about six, eight months ago, but you know what? They've got six men in their family, you know, three women, two or three kids. Guess what? I've got me, my wife, and my kid, disabled kid. I guess I'm going to have to hurt somebody, right? I mean, think about it. And that's why I'm saying the city of Paris had something, and everybody could participate. You know, the church, everybody's going to run to a church if there's an emergency, I guarantee you. You know, after five or six days of no State or Brothers, no Walmarts, they're going to do something desperate. I'm just saying, the city can incorporate a bunch of stuff, very simple, have FEMA pay for it or help out, and it'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfredo.
Franco Pacheco?
Good evening, council and Honorable Mayor. My name is Franco Pacheco, co-founder of Inland Valley Alliance for Monumental Justice. Recently, I was appointed as Chair of Freight Line Communities Action Coalition, which is a group that consists of local nonprofits and grassroots organizations throughout the inland empire. And together, we have some exciting news to share. Recently, we have been awarded a quarter-million-dollar grant to help educate and engage community members, government agency staff, and local community groups to ultimately help shape the future direction of development that affects air quality in the region. This is an important issue for the city of Paris because the logistics boom, it has a major effect on the air quality of your constituents. One of the goals of the grant is to work alongside elected leaders and to learn how we can use and implement new state laws and policies that center communities that are most at risk. On behalf of our Freight Coalition, we are eager to extend an invitation to Mayor Vargas to our Truck Route Summit coming up on November 7 to get started on helping us achieve our goals. You should be receiving an email with more information from one of our staff members, please RSVP. In the event you cannot attend, please delegate two staff members to attend to represent the city of Paris. We will also be sending invitations to council members across the region. This is a great opportunity for elected leaders, local community groups, and local nonprofits to network and improve engagement around issues that affect not only the city of Paris, but the entire region. Thank you for your consideration. We hope to see you there.
Is this going to be one of many meetings?
Yeah, this is going to be our start-off meeting, and so it's going to be a Truck Route Summit, just to get us started on implementing some of the AB 98 new laws that are coming in and how it can best serve the community.
I already know I'm going to be in Tennessee starting November 5, so hopefully, I'll be able to catch you on another meeting, but please still send the email out, and we'll get somebody there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That is all.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, congratulations on that grant. All right, item nine is approval of minutes. Item 9A is consideration to approve the minutes of the regular joint meeting held on September 9, 2025 of the City Council's successor agency to the redevelopment agency and all the other entities as listed on the agenda. Council, if nobody has any comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion by Councilman Navas, second by Mayor Protimrab. Please call the vote.
5-0, motion approved.
Thank you. Item 10 is our consent calendar item. Consent calendar items are normally enacted, and when motioned, the mayor or the city council may remove a consent calendar item for a separate action. We will have public comment limited to three minutes each, and I'm going to start off by pulling item 11K for further discussion. Does anybody else have anything? Did I say, what did I say? I'm thinking Dodgers right now. 10K. Anybody else? All right, so I'm seeking a motion. Well, let me ask, is there a public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. So we're looking at a motion for 10A through Q, except K. And I have a motion by Councilman Corona, second by Councilwoman Vallejo. Please call the vote.
5-0, motion approved.
Thank you. So item 10K has to do with our field, the Morgan Park field, and there's a man that I know by the name of Pedro Pete Magaña. I'm not sure if he's here, but I know he is. Pete, stand up so everybody can see you, sir. Very good. All right, Pete, you can sit down. Pete has no idea why he's here, everybody. So I'm going to read off. This is a proclamation that I will read off. It's well-deserving. So whereas the city of Paris proudly recognizes the extraordinary contributions of individuals who dedicate their time, their talent, and passion to serving our community, and whereas Pete... I'm going to just cut to Pete, okay? I never called him Pedro. Whereas Pete Magaña has been a devoted volunteer with Paris ASO since its founding, giving more than 30 years of service and holding countless leadership roles, including Regional Commissioner, Spring Select Coordinator, Assistant Division Coordinator, Referee Administrator, Field Coordinator, and Coach. And whereas through his tireless commitment, Pete has positively impacted the lives of generations of youth and families, fostering teamwork, sportsmanship, and community pride, with many recognizing him as the heart of Paris ASO. And whereas Pete Magaña was recently honored for his three decades of volunteer service, a recognition that reflects the gratitude and the admiration of the entire ASO community and beyond. And whereas he not only strengthened Paris ASO, but he enriched the broader Paris community by providing opportunities for youth to thrive on and off the field. And whereas his legacy of leadership and mentorship embodies the spirit of volunteerism and stands as an inspiration to all who value service to others. And whereas on August 20, 2025, the Parks and Recreation Committee of the City of Paris recommended naming the Morgan Park Synthetic Soccer Field in his honor to celebrate his lasting dedication to youth sports in Paris. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Michael M. Vargas, mayor of the city of Paris, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize and honor, I'm going to say it this time, Pedro Pete Magaña for his decades of service, and proudly proclaim that the Morgan Park Synthetic Soccer Field shall hereafter be known as the Pedro Pete Magaña Field. This is being presented on the 30th day of September, 2025. We're going to step down, we're going to take some pictures with Pete. Bring up any family members that want to take pictures with us and Pete, so we can let him regroup, and then we're going to come back up here. We'll make some comments, and we'll allow Pete to make some comments as well.
Yeah, we got to vote.
Oh. I, hang on, Pete. I got to make it official. We got to vote on this. I jumped, I jumped the game here. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to pass item 10K. I have a motion by Councilman Corona, second by Councilwoman Vallejo. Please call the vote. Let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Councilmember Vallejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Navas?
Yes.
Councilmember Corona?
Yes.
Mayor Protimrab?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Like they say on that, what's that program, the singing where they sing the last guy? You've got five votes, yes.
5-0, motion approved.
All right, motion approved. So Pete had no idea this was coming. I don't even know what the committee or the ASO team told him why he was here, but it was going to be listed on the presentations. I said, "What'd you tell him?"
I know, that's why.
Oh, I'm not worried about you guys. But, you know, it was originally going to be placed on presentations. We can't put that there. It's going to literally just write off the... So we hit it under consent calendar, knowing Pete's probably not going through our consent calendar, so. You had no idea, right, Pete?
No, not this, no.
So I've known this man because my grandkids played soccer, and I don't know if he coached any of them, but I mean, this man not only coached his kids, now he's teaching grandkids. Any great-grandkids yet?
No.
All right. He said, "Don't make me that old."
No.
All right, let's go. to celebrate his lasting dedication to youth sports in Paris. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Michael M. Vargas, mayor of the city of Paris, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize and honor, I'm gonna say it this time, Pedro Pete Magaña for his decades of service and proudly proclaim that the Morgan Park Synthetic Soccer Field shall hereafter be known as the Pedro Pete Magaña Field. This is being presented on the 30th day of September, 2025. We're gonna step down, we're gonna take some pictures with Pete. Bring up any family members that wanna take pictures with us and Pete, so we can let him regroup and then we're gonna come back up here, we'll make some comments and we'll allow Pete to make some comments as well.
Yeah, we gotta vote.
Oh. I, hang on Pete. I gotta make it official, we gotta vote on this. I jumped, I jumped the game here. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to pass item 10K. I have a motion by Councilman Corona. Second by Councilwoman Vallejo. Please call the vote. Let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Councilmember Vallejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Navas?
Yes.
Councilmember Corona?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Rab?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Like they say on that, what's that program, the thing where they sing the last guy, so you've got five votes, yes.
Five oh, motion approved.
All right, motion approved. So Pete had no idea this was coming.
No.
I don't even know what the committee or the ASO team told him why he was here, but it was gonna be listed on the presentations. What'd you tell him?
I know, that's why.
Oh, I'm not worried about you guys. But, you know, it was originally gonna be placed on presentations. We can't put that there, it's gonna literally just write off the same. So we hid it under consent calendar, knowing Pete's probably not going through our consent calendar, so. You had no idea, right Pete?
No, not this, no.
So I've known this man because my grandkids played soccer and I don't know if he coached any of them, but I mean, this man not only coached his kids, now he's teaching grandkids and any great grandkids yet?
No.
All right, he said, don't make me that old. All right, this goes. Come on up, family. All 75 of you.
All right, guys, everybody look forward, keep smiling. Here we go, ready, one, two. Nice. Everybody keep smiling, keep those eyes open, don't move because when you move, it changes. There we go, perfect, stay right there. Awesome, I got it.
All right, council, if you wanna speak, go ahead and queue in. In the meantime, in addition to receiving this proclamation, Pete, just so you know, and mostly for your family, the city will also be putting one of those bronze plaques at the park. Dedicating the park in your name, so there's a lifetime legacy with that. Your family will always see that as long as they're here in Paris.
I wanna say thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vargas, council people, councilmen, women, and all of you. I just thank you for this recognition. I'm usually not a man with few words, but right now you guys just totally caught me off guard, everybody. I thought something might be up when I see my family out there, all of them. I wasn't expecting all of them. I did share with my wife and we're good out, but I don't know. I think, first of all, I thank my family, you know, it wasn't for them, my kids. All four of my kids, my son and my three daughters all grew up playing soccer and sports. And they also played some softball, two of my daughters did back early in the early 1990s. It wasn't, it was my oldest daughter that came to ASO first. And being a person that, myself, that I grew up here half of my life in Paris. I've been here that long. My parents have recently passed away within the last four or five years, both of them. And I grew up, I played baseball here in the city league. ASO was not around, so I didn't play soccer, not until high school. I went to Paris High School, graduated in 1977. But in 1994, 95, my oldest daughter played soccer. ASO, we found out at Metz Park at the time, and then my other kids followed in line and now they all fell in love with the game. And I think that caused me to fall in love with the game more so. I played in high school for two years in Paris before I graduated in 77, but I've just been one that grew up with the game, grew up with the passion, a love, not only for the game, but to help our community and to help our kids grow in the sport of soccer. It's grown a lot over the last 20, 25 years, quite a bit. And I think that since that has grown in this country as a whole, it's just something that many kids have gotten a hold of. We come and we're so blessed in this country to have so many different sports and so many kids that, my, so many, in growing up and loving the sport that they like. And, but my passion for soccer has always been there, along with baseball. And yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm a Dodger fan too. I'm wondering like you, what's going on right now in game one? But, short series, but I'm sure they're doing well. But I wanna share this, first of all, with my family. On behalf of my family, I just thank them for just for being there with me and helping me along the way and continuing to support me. My wife, especially Sharon, she's been there standing by me. She don't come to the park too often anymore, but she knows I'll be there. At least four days out of the week, I'll be there. Right now, I'm the field coordinator along with my buddy Mario. Mario's back here and we just keep, I just, some people ask me, why'd you take this position? I go, it's a position that nobody wanted to take. It's a position nobody wants. Get up early in the morning, be there at 6:00, bring the field equipment out, and then stick it around if you can for the remainder of the day till the day's over with, taking the equipment and putting it back in our storage bin that we have there at Morgan Park. But I do want to also accept this on behalf of my board and my members. Board members that are here, each and every one of them, from Juan Chavez, who is our RC, to Monica, who is also our assistant RC, and all those in the board, they know who they are. I shared this with them. I shared this time with them and many, many, many others who I shared over the years, over the 30-plus years that I was with ASO and still with ASO. They were there and just seeing their commitment and their desire to help Paris grow in this area. It's so important that we keep our kids involved. And if it's not a sports program, it's some kind of hobby or something they love to do because there's so much out there for them to grasp a hold of that's not good, right? And you know what I'm talking about. And so we need sports, we need stuff like this to keep them going, keep them motivated, keep them going in the right direction. So I'm just thankful that I can just be a small part of this. And I hope I can just continue on. I'm not getting any younger, but at the same time, I still got a fire in me that still wants to go forth and do what I can for this community and for ASO here in Paris as well. Again, I thank you all, thank you for this moment, for this time, thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Mayor Protim?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Magaña on this momentous occasion. Over my 10 years on council, this was definitely the easiest vote. You've been a steward in the community, along with your family, along with the ASO staff and all the parents. Just wanna congratulate you and look forward to many more years of you helping out future kids who are not even born as of today. And once again, I guess you said Paris High School class of 77, you guys were an amazing class. You, Coach Marv, late colleague, Councilman Yarborough, all from that class of 77, so keep rocking. Congratulations.
Councilman Corona?
Thank you, Mayor. When I had the privilege of briefly being involved with the ASO earlier this year, you know, I saw all the people working so hard, you know? And, but someone kinda stood out, you know? So I gotta give special recognition to Ricardo for having the discussions with it, for organizing it. But when I brought it up about what I was thinking about doing, not a single person had a bad thing to say, right? I mean, everyone just said great things about Coach Pete. And then, you know, so I thought it was a great idea. So when I brought it to the Parks and Rec Committee, you know, everyone else felt the same way. And I couldn't find a single person that had something bad to say, you know? And I wanna give a special recognition to my colleague, Councilwoman Valleo, for giving the full support of it as well. You know, and what this year is especially special because with the World Cups coming back to US, right? So we're gonna kinda make it a big push for soccer, you know, just like in 94, right? You know, I spent some few years in ASO as a kid and so seeing my kid also do it as well too. And, you know, Coach Pete has coached generations of kids, right? I mean, people that are growing up with their own kids are having their kids coached by Coach Pete. So it's really amazing. But, you know, Coach Pete has dedicated decades of his life to this community and has helped mentor generations of youth with many even becoming parents and coaches and referees. And, you know, I do wanna make a slight recommendation though. You know, when we do the signage, you know, for me, one of the greatest titles I've ever had after being a father and a husband is being called Coach, right? So I do wanna say, you know, if we could possibly make sure that we call it, and it's really up to Coach Pete, right? But I refer him to Coach Pete. But we make sure that we really put that tie, we emphasize the title, that Coach Pedro Pete Magaña Field. You know, so that everybody that knows, you know, he's not a council member, he's not a politician, right? He's a coach. And we're naming probably the nicest field in the whole city of Paris after Coach Pete. But it's very well deserved for all your many years of service. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to the dedication and what we do in front of all the kids later on. Thank you, Coach.
Councilwoman Vallejo?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Coach Pete. I know I'm new on here and I haven't really talked to you much, but I will say at the Parks and Rec Committee, there was no debate. Everyone said you and everyone told amazing stories about you. And it really shows a true testament of who you are as a coach, but as a person. And just hearing your speech right now, which made me cry a little bit, I really appreciate the people that do things for passion because you don't really find that often. And I don't know you very well, but I just feel that you're such a genuine person. And I'm excited to have something named after you because I really look up for the people who do things for students, for children, and for families. And I just wanna say thank you, thank you so much because you really showed, you are a part of Paris history and I'm very glad that it's you. And it just shows what a strong leader you are, that you also thank your team, your family. And I really look up to you, so thank you so much for all that you do. I appreciate you.
Councilman Navas?
Thank you, Mayor. Coach Magaña, your passion is undeniable. When the mayor was reading out the proclamation, I couldn't help but notice that you were tearing up. And I also, you know, you stood out from the crowd of how ready you also got. And I just realized he has this love for the sport, he has a love for his community. So thank you so much. I believe this couldn't have gone to a better person to have a park named after himself and very well deserving. And I'm glad that you're here along with your beautiful family to be recognized today. So thank you for allowing us this opportunity. And on behalf of the lives that you've already touched through coaching and the lives that you will continue to touch, I really sincerely wanted to thank you for that. So thank you so much.
So Pete, you know, after hearing four people, it's like, what do I have to say now? I mean, ditto? But the good part is everything they said, I agree, 110%. So I'm just gonna leave off with this. You're a legacy, you're a mentor, you're a coach, and after tonight, you are now an icon in the city of Paris. Congratulations to you and your family. All right, that concludes the consent calendar items. You guys are welcome to leave, or you wanna stay with us all the way through the meeting, that's your choice, but I'll give you a time to leave here. See, I knew you're gonna leave. Go celebrate, go celebrate. We'll meet you, where are you guys going so we can meet you after the meeting? At the park? No, thank you guys. Okay, Pete, well deserved, buddy. I'll see you in the soccer field. All right, moving on, item 11 is our public hearings. 11A is consideration to adopt proposed resolution number next in order, approving specific plan amendment SPA 22-05380, a tentative partial map TPM 22-05379, TPM 38730, a conditional use permit CUP 25-00004, development plan reviews DPRS 22-00037 and 22-00038, and variance 25-00001-A, proposal to facilitate a development of a retreat at Lake Paris, formerly a commercial industrial mixed-use project to a commercial residential mixed-use project on 16.91 acres located on the south side of Ramona Expressway between Paris Boulevard and Redlands Avenue. It's a commercial zone of the Paris Valley Commerce Center specific plan. The applicant is Marwan Alabasi. This item was continued off calendar from September 10th, 2024 at the city council meeting. This is gonna be introduced by our Director of Development Services, Mr. Kenneth Fung.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. This item will be presented by our senior planner, Nathan Perez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. The project before you is the Retreat at Lake Paris Project, which was continued off calendar from the September 10th, 2024 city council meeting, which was a year ago. At the city council meeting, the council recommended that the applicant explore replacing the industrial warehouse building with another use. And based on city council feedback, the applicant has revised projects to remove the industrial warehouse and replace it with a multifamily development and also self-storage facility while maintaining the original commercial component, which consists of a hotel and two sit-down restaurants. Also, as part of the revised project, the applicant updated the draft environmental impact report to include alternative four, which is the Retreat at Lake Paris, which is being presented to you tonight. Most recently, August 20th, the Park Commission recommended approval of this project announced before you. So the project site is currently vacant and surrounded by vacant land to the north. To the south is an industrial building. To the east is Camper Resorts of America, and to the west is the Park Place Mobile Home Community. Here's a site photo of my site visit looking south along Ramona Expressway. And here's looking north across Daw Street. So the applicant's proposing a specific plan amendment, which consists of two components, to rezone 7.13 acres from commercial to MFR zone, which is shown in the brown area of the slide, and also to allow self-storage facilities in the commercial zone with a CUP. Since the commercial zone in the Paris Commerce Center specific plan and citywide zoning code does not allow many storage facilities, alternatively, the city council can approve the project tonight, subject to a conditional approval to allow self-storage facilities with a CUP in a business park office zone of the Paris Commerce Center specific plan area, which can be brought back to a regular scheduled city council meeting. Staff has reviewed the project with the airport compatibility plan and it's in Zone D, which has no developments restrictions. And here's the overall site plan, which consists of three components, the commercial shopping center, the multifamily development, and also the self-storage. The applicant decided to include self-storage facility since it's a low-traffic intensity use with minimal to no noise activity, which complements the proposed adjacent multifamily housing and residential component of the Camper Resorts of America. In the next couple slides, I'm gonna give an overview of each component. So here's the first component, which is commercial. For Ramona Expressway, the applicant's proposing two sit-down restaurants and also a four-story hotel, which will have 107 rooms. The site plan- The site plan also provides 239 parking spaces. And there's one point of access along Ramona Expressway. Here's the commercial renderings. City staff has reviewed the project and it complies with the commercial standards and parking. Here's the site plan for the self-storage facility, which is roughly around 179,000 square feet of self-storage, consisting of six buildings. And there's 1,079 storage units, which 1,016 units are climate-controlled. There's also a 2,000-square-foot caretaker's unit towards the entrance. There's 38 parking spaces and 43 RV parking spaces. And the main access is from Daw Street. Here are the building elevations for the self-storage. And city staff has reviewed the project with the development standards of commercial, and it complies, and also the parking. And the last component is the multifamily residential development, which consists of two four-story detached buildings, which is 204 units, which consist of 116 one-bedroom units and 88 two-bedroom units. This component provides 396 parking spaces and also provides amenities such as pools, spas, restrooms, community rooms, fitness gym, outdoor lounge areas, barbecue stations. And it's located, actually, all those amenities are located within the middle of the two buildings.
Hold on, Nathan, go back.
Here you go.
So 396 parking spaces of 396, 204 are covered? Or that's an addition on top of 396?
204 are covered, so it's not additional. Yeah, that's part of the unit, the total count. And here's the multifamily development renderings. As you can tell, it's a four-story apartment community. City staff has reviewed the project and it complies with the development standards and parking. And also, as part of the updated project, an environmental impact report was prepared for alternative four. A second notice of availability was recirculated for 45 days for public comment, and we only received one letter, which was Riverside County Flood Control, which was informational. The ER concluded that all impacts have been reduced to less than significant and have been reduced to below significance level with the implementation of mitigation measures, except for impacts related to cumulative GHD, which is greenhouse gas emissions, which have been identified as significant and unavoidable. Adoption of the statement of overriding considerations for GHD would be required to approve the project. So in conclusion, planning commission recommended that the city council adopt certifying the final environmental impact report, identifying alternative four as part of the project, adopting of mitigation monitoring and reporting program, statement of overriding considerations and findings of fact, and adopt resolution next in order approving specific plan amendment, tentative parcel map, conditional use permit, and development plan reviews, and variance, subject to the conditions of approval and the findings contained in the resolution. Also, alternatively, since the commercial zone in the Commerce Center specific plan and citywide zoning code does not allow mini storage facilities, the city council can approve the project tonight, subject to a conditional approval to allow self-storage facilities with a CUP in the Vista Park Office Zones of the Paris Commerce Center specific plan, which can be brought back to the council for consideration in a future city council meeting. Before I conclude my presentation, for the record, staff received one letter in support of the project from Paris Neighbors in Action, which is before you for consideration. So this concludes my presentation. The applicant's here also for any questions you might have for him.
All right, if the applicant's here, I'll allow the applicant to come up and say a few words.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff, thank you for allowing us to come in front of you. I cannot believe it's been over a year since we were here last time. And Councilwoman Navas, I did have a red face and a tear after that last meeting a year ago because I wanted to move out of Paris. I was so disappointed when the project didn't go. But your wonderful staff talked me into revisiting the site and trying to do what the community wanted. So we went through different alternatives and we studied the site to see if we could accommodate what the community, what the leadership wanted. And I heard at that meeting, we went through the report and we saw there was a need for housing, which is statewide and citywide. So we figured we'll put a housing component. We designed the project, we went back and forth, and we made a lot of changes to accommodate different colors, scheme, different landscape. So we think we came up with a project where we left the front, which is the hotel and the restaurants, which I believe from planning commission to council last time, everybody was excited about that project. Except we made some changes, we flip-flopped the hotel and the restaurants. But we kept them intact. We added a component of the self-storage because that back area is really kind of useless to bring any more commercial. There's not enough demand. And there was demand and request by the community, they wanted self-storage. And we did a study, and there's shortage of self-storage in that area, especially if there's a big residential community. So we feel the project we came up with is really, will complement each other. We keep the commercial, which is a good tax-generating project. We have a lot of jobs between the hotel and the restaurant. And the residential will have different sizes of units, but it'll be nice with all the amenities that we added in it. So with that, it's a project that is over $100 million project versus the initial one, which we liked, but we withdrew that because of the warehouse, of course. So we'd like to get your approval on the project. I think we did enough changes in it that we hope to get the support. That's what I have. If anybody has a question, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Alabasi. All right, does anybody have any quick questions or anything for clarification before I open up the public hearing? You want a quick one right now?
Yeah.
Councilman Corona.
For staff, Mr. Nathan? So I totally understand all the other stuff, and I was reading the staff report, but I'm still kind of a little bit, I need more clarification. You know, they're at the bottom of the screen that's up there right now. Since the Z-zone is in the specific plan and citywide zoning code does not allow mini storage facilities, alternatively, the city council can approve the project tonight, subject to a condition of approval to allow self-storage. So I totally understand that we needed a zone change, but would we have to do a zone change for the entire PVCC? Or can we just do it just for this one project? Because my concern is then everybody's going to be just trying to throw it in there because, you know, they've been doing that lately, right? And like, I'm not a huge fan of self-storage, but compared to the warehouse, I'll take that any day of the week.
Yeah, real quickly, this zone change or request for the alternative, this would apply to all commercial zone property in the PVC-specific plans. So if anybody wished to have self-storage, they would actually have to apply for a zone change in the PVC-specific plan.
As of right now, the way it is right now?
No, this is what we're suggesting. Right now, self-storage is not allowed in the commercial in the PVCC.
Okay.
Initially, we recommended that it would be just amendment through a CUP, but after further looking into our zoning code and the PVCC, we thought it would be better to have a provision that it would be BP zone land versus a commercial zone land.
Okay, so I probably need more clarification. How do we make sure that we only approve it just for this project? You want to, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I understand the question is currently the BP zone allows mini storage facilities with a CUP. So it's already in place, so that's currently allowed. So the only thing you're doing now is just changing the zone to BP.
Only for this?
Only for this site, yes.
The part of the site?
Correct, yes. Now, all other...
It wouldn't apply to any other project in the PVCC?
Currently, any property zone BP already allows them with a CUP.
Okay.
So you're not changing the zone for any other property, only for this one. So whatever's existing as a BP zone in the current specific plan already allows mini storages with a CUP. So that's not changing. So the only thing you're doing is now, instead of allowing mini storage in a commercial zone, you're just changing the zone to BP.
But what my colleague is saying, though, is he's just afraid about it being spread around everywhere. What I understand, just didn't really say it straight out, but any other project, they don't just automatically get it. They would have to come here and, well, that's not what you're telling him, and that's what he's asking. What they're doing here tonight, another applicant in another location, similar to what Mr. Marwan would have to come back here and get that approval. It's not a blanket for everybody.
Not to the city council. It would only go to the planning commission if it's already zone BP.
That's not what he's asking you, though.
So why is he, he has to come here? Why does Marwan have to come to the city council to get this change? Is that...
He's here tonight originally, the application was to rezone, to allow, excuse me, to amend the code to allow mini storages in a commercial zone. He's already zone commercial.
Okay, he's zone commercial, so he needs to get that area zoned to BP.
Yes, plus the fact that he also has to rezone the private commercial to multiple family for the apartment complex, too.
Gotcha, okay, okay. All right, that's the questions I got, cool, thank you.
All right, let me go ahead and open up the public comment. Thank you, Nathan.
Oh, wait, Mayor, I had a quick question for Mr. Alabasi. I just wanted to ask, and I would highly recommend it, is I've been to other self-storages nearby, and I really like the idea, the concept of adding business suites and business offices inside the storage facility. It can be done, and I've seen them where it could be like 100-feet offices or a little bit more. And I do believe that that will allow more small business owners to come and do meetings. You can add internet and like AC units in there. And I do think that it's very, very beneficial. I didn't realize till recently that many self-storages, they don't offer sales tax. But you are offering a lot of great things. But I do believe if you can add those business suites, I think it would be very helpful for our small business community.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We did consider office building, and as you may know, I own the office building where my office is now Ramona Expressway. We built it in '08, it was vacant for seven years. We could not get a tenant. Now there's probably a little bit better chance, but if you want to do office, which I'm building some on Riverside, you really want to be closer to the freeway. You want to be closer to schools, to downtown. Where the self-storage, we entertain different options. The dilemma when you go an office back there and you put a dental office, people will get lost trying to find where the dental office is. You want exposure, you want to be in Ramona Expressway by the freeway. And we're not the type to do pads and leave it vacant. We are going to be the tenant for every single parcel. So we come into you with a project, and you're right, this does not generate as much sales tax. It doesn't have many jobs, by the way. We're not misleading anybody, three people working there. But if you look at the hotel, if you look at the restaurants, so we're giving you different components that we hope as a package, you're going to look into it. But office buildings, it could start coming to life in Paris because of all the businesses or the warehouses. But it really needs to be closer to the freeway, closer to the heart of the city. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing at 7:34. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, sir. Zach Straters.
All right, good evening. Zach Strater is Care, California. So first of all, we're in overwhelming support of the project, and a lot of it has to do with the responsiveness of the developer. So I think you could just tell by his general tone, there were various elements of the community that reached out and said, hey, we have some different opinions and some different feelings, and let's see if we can, you know, work to a livable modicum with this project. And so I think when you look at the revised project, that it shows. It shows that there's willingness to try different models. Various aspects have been changed drastically. Obviously, not everybody is going to be pleased regardless of any kind of draft that you put out. But with regards to various elements of the community, particularly those whom Care, California represents, we're overwhelmingly in support. We're a big fan of the revised model, and we're asking for your approval tonight. Thanks and God bless you.
Thank you, Zach.
Brandon Lares Lee.
Brandon, you here? Call the next person.
Rob Ramos.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Robert Ramos. I'm a business agent for the ironworkers with local 416, the reinforcing. We are hereby in full support of this project. Why? As we're here almost a year ago, see the big difference. The developer is committed to the city of Paris, if you really look at it. He looked, he listened, and he changed a lot of this project. Overall, I think it's a great project. He's committed to local hire, which is the big plus for the city, right? What we make in the city, we're going to spend in the city. Good thing about that, he's committed to skilled and trained. Why is that important? Because along with that skilled and trained, it's going to let our members have a good pension, have a good annuity, have a good retirement, have medical benefits for their young ones. The local hire, man, I remember starting off, we didn't have this benefit almost 30 years ago. I had to drive to downtown LA, you know? Back then, it was only about a 45-minute hour drive. Now it's two and a half hours. That's a lot of time away from your family. So overall, I think this is a great project for the city of Paris, and we are here for your full support and commitment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
John Sisley.
My name is John. I represent the Union Plumbers, Pipe Fitters, and Refrigeration for San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. I'm also a delegate to the Building Trades Commission, State of California. Usually I'm up here, and the opposition to this is because I'm supporting an industrial-commercial project, and it usually involves a warehouse. And here tonight, they've done the opposite. This guy went back and listened to the community and came up with a community-based project. It's not a warehouse, and they're actually changing from an industrial property to residential. We need the homes, right? We need the jobs. Paris has been very supportive. Out of all the cities that I get the privilege of doing this in, all over San Bernardino and Riverside Counties, Paris is probably the most supportive of your community's benefits and wages. Your community appreciates that, don't get me wrong. But I think this lends to that argument that there's always going to be opposition against development in general. All right, no matter how clean you make it, there's always going to be some folks opposed to it. So just so you understand, we're in complete support of this project. And please make a good decision for your community tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Franco Pacheco.
Good evening, again, council. I'm Franco Pacheco. And I think a year ago, it's hard to believe, it used to be a warehouse, and it's so refreshing that Alabasi decided to redo his plan to incorporate housing. This is something that we desperately need, is housing. Kept the commercial, and it goes to show, you know, with pressure and, you know, obviously, this developer, you know, looked at it again, and he saw the benefits to the whole city as a whole, that we can do something better than doing just a big warehouse. And I'd like to thank the Alabasi that are actually taking that step to change this project into a housing and commercial project. And for Inland Valley Alliance, we're in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all.
Okay, thank you. All right, this time, we're going to close the public hearing at 7:40. And open it back up to my colleagues, anybody have any further questions, comments? Mayor Protem Rep.
Just like to echo the sentiments of many of the speakers and want to thank Mr. Alabasi for working with the community, working with staff to revise the project. And it shows how we can work to make projects that are more amenable to the city and increase the value to the city. And I think this will help benefit the city. And just one small minor thing that was changed was moving the restaurants from one side of the project closer to the existing commercial. I think that small change helps increase the value of the project. So I am in support of this project, and I do understand what Councilman Corona was talking, mentioning regarding the BPO land, support of the project regarding the BPO stance, rezoning that section for BPO, not to give free... rezoning that section for BPO, not to give free range to any person with commercial land to move forward on a self-storage. We'll go case by case. So, I support this project with that caveat.
Nathan, do me a favor and pull up the screen that shows a picture of the apartments. Our hotel. All right. Councilman Corona.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a chance to meet up with Mr. Alabasi, you know, like within, shortly after the last meeting, which took place about a year ago. So, I figured he'd be upset, right? You know, with our council denying his project and stuff like that. But I was so impressed that he was willing to make changes, and he was willing to make changes of what the residents and what the council recommended to him. So, I'm very impressed with your project. You know, going from the original plan to what you have now, it's great to see that developers are willing to make changes like the way you are. And I see you as a model for other developers. You know, some of these developers are so stubborn, right? And, you know, like they're willing to do so drastic changes without changing their actual project, right? So, but I think what's great about this, that you're still keeping the restaurant. You know, people say, oh, I can't build the restaurants unless you approve my warehouse, but he's still doing it, you know, same there with the hotel. So, just really amazing to see that. I do want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilwoman Vallejo. If possible, we could maybe at least look into, you know, having maybe just a couple suites in there so that people could, you know, the small mom-pop shops. So, it'd be kind of used as a storage place, but, you know, a little bit fancier, I guess. But I just want to thank you for the new project that you're bringing. I... Is it time? Can I keep my comments? Yeah, I'll keep my comments. But I definitely support it. I fully support it. And I think what spoke volumes, I've never seen it happen, but you as a developer that's even including a little bit of a BPO land, right? You still got the support of the Paris neighbors in action, and it spoke volumes that they were willing to support you, that they actually took the time to write a letter of support. So, I want to thank them as well, too, for speaking up in support of this. And I know one speaker said, hey, so, you know, some people are upset. Well, I haven't heard anybody upset with the new project that you have. So, I think you're doing things the right way, and I hope you continue to invest in the city of Paris.
Representative from Care Two.
Yeah. That was impressive, too.
Voice of support. All right. Councilwoman Vallejo.
Yes. I would like to say that I really like that you worked with the whole community and staff members. It must be really hard to be in this business and having to change everything, so I really appreciate you for working with every community member. But I would like to make a motion to approve the project with the alternative with the BPO zone and also recommend that the northerly storage building be changed to an office building and applicant to work with staff to revise the site plan.
What was that last part?
So, just to recommend that the storage building be changed with a couple of business suites and the applicant to work with staff to revise the site plan.
But I think, and that's good, he doesn't understand what you're talking about. You and I do, because we've seen it. But are you done with your...
Yes.
Okay. Let me finish with comments. We've still got two other people who want to make comments, and then I want to address what it is that you're talking about, because I think Malcolm brought it up, too. Councilwoman Alba.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can imagine, this is where I am constantly fighting up over here as far as the elimination of warehouses and providing better projects for our community. So, the fact that the applicant was able to do that tonight, it just... It means a lot to me personally, and I know it means a lot to our community, the fact that you're able to see the vision. And maybe next time for future projects, you could save yourself the disappointment and go straight to projects more like the ones tonight here presented. But again, thank you so much, and I'm sure it took a lot of, like you mentioned, moving out of Paris and doing all of it, but I'm glad you have come along the way. And I know it can't be easy, but truly, truly, truly appreciate the fact that you're able to bring this project, and even the renderings we have here on screen, this is amazing, and this is more of what we'd like to see. And I do want to also mention the fact that you're bringing sit-down restaurants versus other applicants who just want to, you know, check the box and bring a restaurant, but it turns out to be any other Carl's Jr. or another fast-food establishment. So, I'm really thankful that you're bringing us a great project that better aligns with our community. So, thank you so much. And if it isn't clear, I'm in full support of this project tonight.
It's clear as blue sky or clear as water. We already know where this is going, but so I just want to point out what we're talking about, what Councilwoman Vallejo brought. We're not asking for office buildings, a dental office. So, and there's a terminology, if there's any developer out there that knows it, I forget what they call it, but it's... You're not changing anything with your storage. You're just making the front end of a... Say, say a storage is, to make it simpler, 10 by 20. So, the first 10 feet is an office area. They're going to have a desk. They may have a table or a chair. And then, the backside of that is the remaining portion of the storage unit. So, their business, and just for, just to throw it out there, I sell rims, and I can't afford to go open up a big tire, what do you call those? Just tire. I can't afford to open up a just tire place or even afford to rent a big office space. But the new concept now out there is they're doing this in storage facilities. Half the unit is their little office, their little store, and their warehouse, if you will. Bad word around here, but the warehouse is the back of that storage unit. That's what the ask is. We're not asking for an office building. We're not asking for a dental building. It's just to convert a couple of your storage units into office suites, if you will. Can you, would you think of entertaining that concept? I mean, you can try it out. You're not going to, you're not changing the whole layout of the whole place.
Well, thank you for the nice words and the compliments and the project. I just hope you keep in mind what we've done and keep the bar high. Because like I said earlier, I'm a small developer. I'm taking up a $100 million project. I just hope you'll keep Ramon Expressway for me all the way to the 215 as four lanes.
I'm not...
I'm not shrinking down to two lanes.
Mr. Alabasi.
I will answer your question.
I'm not reopening this public. You need to just answer the question so we can move on.
The question is, yes, 1,016 units are air-conditioned climate control. We cannot have it as a display for rims, for example, like the mayor said, and have public customers walking in and out. However, if there's somebody doing online commerce, importing products from China, and they want to set up a little office in there and have a storage in the back, that is potential as long as the city permits and license, business license allows it. I don't have a problem. That's why we have a climate control. So, if you want to have a little office in there and have a storage in the back, it just, we can't have a display for public to come in and out, but you can have it as an office.
Does that answer the question?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to have Wendell explain, because we have talked about this before, and he's better at explaining it.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, Councilwoman Vallejo and I did visit a storage facility out in Eastvale. I think what we're trying to get at is there are certain businesses. They don't use that as a commercial site, per se, but they do have like a metal fabricator that keeps his materials there. So, in the morning, he goes and picks up his material, puts it in his truck, and then goes about his way. We had a glass manufacturer that goes there, picks up his glass, or does some fabrication with his glass at that facility. So, yes, I mean, there are certain, a small portion of it is an office space. I think that's where Councilwoman Vallejo is going for, because it does bring small businesses to these little, you know, areas where they can rent it out, and it's not a full-blown commercial, per se.
And I'm okay entertaining that. The only problem is, as a developer whole, we build it to occupy it ourselves. In the business of self-storage, when you designate it, you have to designate the number of units. I don't want to go designate, let's say, 20,000 square feet for a potential tenant, and then the tenant doesn't come, and what do I do? If there is a tenant that is available or somebody talking to the city, I would definitely entertain it. But I just don't want to have it, I don't believe in doing pads, dirt, or building a building, leave it empty. We're going to occupy it, and we already have a management company on board. So, my fear is not just to build it and they'll come, because that doesn't happen in our business. But I'm willing to entertain it if there's such a tenant who wants to occupy a portion of it.
Can you, would you consider modifying your motion to at least, if he's willing to explore that option? Well, not us, though. That's for him to do.
Like a feasibility study, perhaps?
Like just to do more research and find tenants?
Absolutely. But we can't, I don't have a glass shop or a metal shop. But if there's one approaching, because some businesses do approach city, and they say, hey, can we have a shop like that? So, I'm willing to entertain that, but I can't open it myself or leave it vacant. But I'm willing to entertain that thought.
Okay.
All right. Staff, do you need her to repeat the, her motion? You got it? Who's documenting the motion? It's basically what she's...
Yeah, we could, when we take back the BPO zone land, we'll explore that, and we can make that a condition of approval.
I don't want to make it a condition of approval. This is, we're only exploring, and he's going to look into this, see if he can do it.
Yeah, please.
Right. We're only exploring right now, not a condition of approval.
We can explore it before, because that component would need, would have to come back to council. And that was part of the recommendation, so we could explore that with...
Why would it have to come back to council if he's willing to, if he's willing to make... If he's willing to just make...
It's because...
Now, stepping out, say what you're saying.
Staff, Mayor.
Hold on, hold on.
I was just agreeing with you, Mayor. Sorry, I spoke it out loud. I was wondering what's coming back to the council. I was just trying to follow back.
This doesn't need to come back to a council. The exploration, or is that the word, exploration? It's for him to look at how he can do that. He brought up a point about business license. You need to find out how that works. If you have to issue a business license, he needs to explore. Is this going to be feasible for him to do this? And we're not asking you to make a Taj Mahal suite. It's just saying, split a unit up where a person puts a desk and a phone in front. He comes in, checks his messages or emails, I perhaps described it wrong initially. Looks at whatever came in, and then he gets the stuff that's stocked in the back and takes off and goes to work, because he can't afford a full-on brick-and-motor facility.
The dilemma with these units, they don't have restrooms. There's no parking in the front.
Again, this is for you to take the time to explore, because we know what we're talking, we've seen it. I've been there. The units share a bathroom. There's a bathroom close by, and we're not talking 100 units. Some of these facilities only have 10, 15 maybe, and it's just a little mini-office, if you will, with their little place of storage in the back, and they all share a bathroom at the end of the hallway.
We'll talk to staff, see if there's potential tenants and what use could be done.
And that's, it's Assistant City Manager Buck Tye's shop, so he knows exactly what we're talking about, so he can explain it to you. So, again, just to clarify, the motion is for exploration for the applicant to look into this, and then you on the city side, what also needs to transpire. Got it?
I appreciate that, because we're not changing the footprint.
No, you're not changing, you're not changing anything.
We'll explore it with staff.
This is beautiful. That's why I needed to make this very clear, because you had this off-guard. We're okay. All right. I need a second. You want to be the mover since you did this? It includes the BPO. Yes. Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Vallejo, a second by Councilman Corona. Please call the vote. Someone didn't vote. Elizabeth.
Five-oh motion approved.
Thank you. All right. 11B is consideration to adopt proposed resolution number next in order and introduce the first reading of a proposed ordinance number next in order regarding general plan amendment 23-05247, a zone change 23-05245, planned development overlay zone 23-05246, tentative tract map 23-05244, TTM 38775, and the development plan review 23-0019. This is a proposal to facilitate a development of Acacia Pointe, a 141-unit townhome-style condominium project on 11.6 acres located south of Nuevo Road and east of Wilson Avenue. The applicant is Ryan Woosley, D.R. Horton. And this is going to be introduced by our Director of Development Services, Mr. Kenneth Fung.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. This item will be presented again by our senior planner, Nathan Perez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The second item before you is the Acacia Pointe project, which was recommended for approval by the planning commission on August 7, 2025. The commission recommended our approval since the developer resolved the concerns raised at the planning commission and also the local residents during the May 7 planning commission meeting. And since then, the developer has enhanced their architectural treatments, increased the landscaping on the easterly and southerly property lines to maintain privacy, expanded common open space area, and also incorporated a 1,500-square-foot clubhouse. Ultimately, also, the developer conducted a community meeting with residents in the area to answer questions and to address their issues concerning the stockpile height and also the dust that's being generated and privacy. Based on that, ultimately, the applicant disclosed their commitment to remove the stockpile by September 3 of this year, and staff has since visited the project site and confirmed that the stockpile has been reduced in height and also moved away from the residences. So, the project site is currently vacant, and you might notice that there's 57 lots. And you might say, well, why is there 57 lots? Well, it was actually recorded around 2007, and the reason why they didn't build it was because of the 2008 recession. Currently, the site is currently vacant, and to the north is apartments in the shopping center. To the south, east, and west, a single-family residential. As part of the project, the applicant's proposing a general plan amendment. The current general plan designation is R6000, which is single-family, and the proposed is MFR14, multi-family residential. Also, as part of the component is a zone change. Currently, the zoning is R6000 also, and the applicant's proposing an MFR14, PDO, which is multi-family planned development overlay, which allows flexibility in the development standards to facilitate this townhome condo project. Here's a site photo looking across Nuevo Road, and if you notice, there's no more stockpile. Also, here's east across Wilson Avenue. So, here's the site plan, and it's actually tilted to the side. North is actually on the right-hand side of the slide, consisting of 141-unit-for-sale product townhome-style condominiums. And if you notice, it's also going to be gated and also maintained by an HOA. There's 34 detached buildings consisting of seven three-plexes, which are three units attached to each other, 15 four-plexes, 12 five-plexes. And there's, all the units are ranging between three to four bedrooms, ranging from 1,600 square feet to 1,652 square feet, and all the units will have a two-car garage. Some of the amenities being proposed is the 1,500-square-foot clubhouse, swimming pool, tot lot, dog park, and shaded picnic areas that are distributed throughout the whole development. And here are the amenities which are depicted that are going to be provided. Here are the building elevations for the clubhouse building, which will have a community room where people could conduct HOA meetings. And city staff has reviewed the project in compliance with the MFR14 standards and parking standards. And here's the cross-section depicting the distance of the southerly property line, which will be 20 feet away. And on the right-hand side is the cross-section, which pretty much just showed the easterly property line distance of 27 feet from the structure to the property line. Here's a rendering, how it's going to look towards the main entrance off of Wilson Avenue. towards the main entrance off of Wilson Avenue. Here's typical Spanish architecture. And this is the typical Italianate. So based on that, an ISMND was prepared, and it was circulated for a thirty-day review, and we received three comment letters. One from the Department of Transportation and Riverside County Flood Control, which were informational in nature, and the Eastern Municipal Water District letter, which pretty much tells the project proponent that they need to consult with their Development Services Department. Based on that, none of the comments raised additional environmental concerns, not already addressed in the ISMND. In conclusion, staff, actually, Planning Commission recommended that the council adopt resolution adopting mitigated negative declaration twenty-four zero-three and mitigation monitoring and reporting program approving general plan amendment, tentative tract map three-eight-seven-seven-five, development plan review based on the findings contained in the resolution and subject to the conditions of approval. Also, introduce the ordinance number approving planned development overlay and zone change based on the findings contained in the ordinance and subject to the conditions of approval. So this concludes my presentation. The applicant is also here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Who's representing? Want to come up, share a few words, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Dan Boyd, Vice President of D.R. Horton. It's a pleasure to be here finally this evening. We've been working with this project with your Planning Commission, with the community, and with the staff, and I applaud all three of them, particularly with the community. We are developing and very excited to bring to the city a vibrant community that's gone through extensive review with your Planning Commission. We have added substantial improvements. We've reconfigured our improvements. And we've been through a couple ad hoc meetings, so we feel very close to this project this evening. And we hope that you support your Planning Commission's recommendation. This project's been sitting dormant for a number of years. It's been a vacant lot. It's been undeveloped, and so we're excited to take a piece of raw land and turn it into a vibrant, wonderful housing opportunity for your city. We are basically in the process of finishing some remedial grading. It's been a little bit of a sore spot with the community, and we appreciate that. And we're making every effort to finalize those final efforts. I applaud your staff for watching over our shoulders very carefully, and I think we're on the right track. We did have a couple rain events over the past several weeks, which has caused some inundation and some soils issues, so it slowed our progress. But we are on the final ends of, of that issue. Subject to your approval this evening, we'll be moving forward with our development plans and basically working with the neighbors to attempt to continue our communications to resolve some of their concerns. There are some here this evening. With an infill project, it's not easy. You have to not only design a good project for the city and the community, but you have to deal with the concerns of the adjacent neighbors. And so we've been working closely in that regard. Dust control, for example, we revisited recently by AQMD and found the project in total compliance. We do have dust issues. We've had wind issues. And so we are trying to work with a few homeowners that basically have expressed some concerns, and we're working with them to try and remedy a solution to that end. Furthermore, I want to say that D.R. Horton is, is not a newcomer to your city. And we feel very privileged and honored to continue our credibility in this town. And frankly speaking, we're very excited about the prospects of the city of Paris. It is a vibrant community. It's a community on the rise. And we're very, very interested in preserving our reputation and continuing the quality development that we've done in the past. We have more projects coming down the pike. But this one particularly is important to us, because we kind of started with nothing, and we've gone through a couple Planning Commission meetings. We respected their guidance and their recommendations. With respect, that led to conditions of approval, resolutions, and findings, all of which we wholly support as written. So this evening, I want to say thank you for your time and consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation. Any questions you may have, we'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any quick questions before I open up the hearing?
Yes, I have a question for the applicant.
Come on up, Mr. Boyd. Mayor Protem?
Two questions. First one regarding the original tract map with the fifty-seven units. Was there any effort to try to develop it with the fifty-seven units? Because I see even on Google Maps, those streets are laid out on Google Maps. Was there any effort to try to adhere to the two thousand and seven tract, tract map?
Well, the reason why, frankly, is because it's unmarketable with the fifty-seven lots. And with today's prices, land prices, cost of labor, materials, basically, we believe that that would not be a successful development for us. It could be for someone else, but it wasn't for D.R. Horton. So what we decided to do was take a good look at what's really needed in the city. And this townhome project is going to be affordable in terms of a wider range of homeowners. It's going to offer first-time homeowners, move-up homeowners, and, and those that kind of want to maybe downsize. And so what we're trying to do in this very challenging marketplace is to offer a wide spectrum of opportunity. And that's one of the reasons why we came to this conclusion, which you see here this evening.
And the second question would be, do we have a rendering for the residents on Shady Oaks? What's the height differential between the, the new units and the existing units on Shady Oaks? They look like they're both two, two stories. I just wanted to make sure. Maybe you or Nathan or somebody could- I know it's two stories, but the, I know they're grading there in Shady Oaks. Is it going to be the, the unit, the new units, are they going to be higher up or about equal to people, the people on Shady Oaks?
Nathan, there's, there's a cross-section in the exhibit.
So if I understand your question, I believe what you're asking is, what's the delta between our roof height versus the existing roof height? And you can see there's some of a line-of-sight diagram here. We've got anywhere between twenty up to twenty-seven feet, not including the setback of the existing homes. So we, we are probably a little higher. Our grade pad elevations, however, are very, very close, or within about a foot, maybe even less. There's not a huge disparity between our pad elevation and their pad elevation. They're compatible. But our second-story floor will be probably a little higher than the existing homes. But to that end, we have a substantial landscaping plan in between our project and the property line. So I think that when staff had reviewed that particular concern, we are able to address that with our landscaping and planting plan.
One last question I just thought of right now. Those units that are abutting Shady Oaks, there, I'm assuming this, this, this is a driveway. You don't, can't see where my finger is going, but you see the, okay, to the right, closer to Shady Oaks would be the front of the unit. And then the back would be a shared driveway between the other units and those units, or is that?
Is that a shared driveway? I don't think that's a shared driveway.
Sorry, Ryan Woosley, D.R. Horton?
If you're talking about the east property line, no, those are backyards. They'll have a ten-foot backyard, a vinyl fence, then the, I can't read it, I don't have my glasses, but the twenty or twenty-seven feet, and then the existing residents.
Okay, that helped mitigate some of my concerns, because I, you know, you don't want to have your backyard, and then there's like a driveway, and then there's a-
Yeah, no, no. The backyards are side yards along all the PLs.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Boyd, you can relax. Thank you. All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing at eight-ten. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak?
Yes, sir. Alfredo Idrano?
Hi. Yeah, we were, the dust is a hu, was a huge issue. They've accommodated a lot more watering. It was, it's, it's still a mess. We're trying to negotiate right now with, right now, it's wording between me and them on, you know, they want, they want me to sign off on my heirs' parent or heirs in the next twenty years that they, they not sue Horton. And so I was upset at that, but I haven't had a chance to talk to them. But I tried to, but it didn't, we didn't finite anything. There's still dust, but it's not huge, okay? They did accommodate that on my side. I know, I had literally two, two more neighbors come up to me today, about three, four hours ago, and complained about the dust. And I said, hey, well, there's a phone number on the white sign out there. You guys call them and deal with them. And that's all I had to say about that. Some of the other neighbors had me look at their walls, and I, I did. Took pictures of cracks, because the movement of, you know, they, they connect these huge fifty-ton machines, and it shakes your house like crazy. And some of them have stem walls, and then they have their wood fence. And who knows where the cracks came from? Okay, but it, it's, it's sort of, it'll make you wonder. But it's so, but again, they do talk to you. They do come out. I was able to walk on their property and, and look at all this stuff and point out issues. Another issue I had with one of the pictures, they show trees. And I was hoping that they would put small trees in their backyard, because if you put some big old pines out there, it's a wind tunnel, and that's going to become a fire hazard. Okay, and we don't want fire hazards. They're going to put a plastic fence up, put fire hazard with a plastic fence up. What, it becomes a bigger fire hazard. So I was asking them to, at the other council meetings, the planning meetings, if they would put different kinds of trees to accommodate, you know, not, it's so windy. It's so, so windy there. I think that's about all I had to say. But I think they're a good company, you know, they, they seem to be doing and, and working with us. We just have to finite everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all.
Thank you. Come on up, state your name, please.
Sorry, I had to make a list, so I wouldn't forget.
I, I'm sorry, you need to speak on the microphone.
My name is Sonia, and I live on Shady Oaks Drive. I do have a list. I want to make sure I go down everything. We are concerned about the drain. My home is one with the three-foot retaining wall. It is, there are cracks on there. My home, for the last two months, had been shaking, seven AM to four PM, nonstop. And I'm talking about four-to-five-point-old earthquake, nonstop. I work from home. My computer screen is like this. I've had to hold it so it doesn't move. I am concerned that our foundation is messed up now. If it's causing cracks in the retaining wall, I can only imagine what's happened to the foundation of our home. Other than that, the drain. The drain that they're going to be putting on the back of our homes, is it going to be connected by cement? They told us they weren't going to be touching our wall. They have leveled a little bit. So is it not going to be touching? There's still a lot of questions we can't get answered. Other than that, I'm listening to the community. I think they have done a lot better of a job, but there is still, that communication is not there. They said that they had fixed all the issues, or they were addressed. That's not true. There's still a lot. They're wanting us to sign off on a ridiculous amount, and I'm talking about like two hundred bucks. And it is what it is. You can take it or leave it. When a lot more, I'm talking about, we've probably spent close to a thousand dollars in damages from just more than anything rodents right now. It was never an issue. It became an issue when they started digging back there. Other than that, parking, I know that wasn't addressed this time. It was on May, May seventh. We are concerned. We really are. Because if you live there and have an emergency, I know it's not an environmental factor, but that's going to be an issue coming in and out. What if you have two emergencies at the same time, which has happened on our block? They're not working with us necessarily with, they're starting, their engineers are starting to look into our retaining wall. But I would like the city to actually help with us with that as well. Because who's going to pay for our damage? They want to wipe their hands with giving us minimum, but what's going to happen then? Like he said, he wants you to sign off on an amount, and oh, don't come back to us ever again. Well, if it's damage that they're causing, you mentioned fifty-seven tracks. Why didn't they even consider that? I know he said that the labor, it was excess amount of money, which, I mean, labor's gone down in the last few years. Materials have gone down in the last few years. They already have the land. Why not consider that option? The stockpile is still there. I actually have videos of it from this afternoon from where it was super, there was dust going all over the place. And the stockpile's still there. They moved it from directly behind our homes to the center of the field or the land, but it's still-
All right, thank you. Well, Madam, City Manager, can you have staff member get her information? And we can follow up with her, with our city engineer. Don't quite leave till we get your information, okay? Thank you. Anybody else? Madam? City Clerk?
No, sir.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to? Come on up, state your name, please. Is there any more people that want to talk on this that didn't sign up? Okay.
I didn't know I could sign up. I'm sorry. I live on Shady Oaks also. I live next door to her. And I also have a retaining wall, and my retaining wall has cracks, like multiple. They're right here. I, I have so many pictures. I have a pool, underground pool, so my pool's constantly dirty. I have to now spend double pay to get it clean all the time. I have to clean my filters every month instead of three times out of the year. And I'm, every month, I'm spending money on getting it clean. So now we can't even be outside. And then the heat's not no more. I can't open my windows. I have to have the AC on all day, because I can't open my windows to get the fresh air from outside because of my dirt, the dirt that's going around. And then the film mices. I had to pay fumigation to come and put traps around my backyard, because I have a daughter that's disabled. She's paralyzed from the neck down. And two of them already went in my home, and I couldn't sleep all night, because I was afraid. My daughter sleeps on the bottom floor. This is a two-story home. My daughter sleeps on the bottom floor, because that's where her room's at, because she can't go upstairs. So I can't sleep, because I'm afraid that it's going to go in her room, and it's going to bite her, because she can't move or, or move it out of her feet or anything. So those are the concerns that I'm having, that they're not looking at the problems that I'm having in my home. My gate is coming apart, when it was never apart. All that I'm having in my home, in my backyard. My furniture is dirty. I'm spending money on getting it clean all the time, because it's so filthy. So my main concern is, what's going to happen? My floor is already cracking. So my, my concern right now is that my pool, I don't want it to crack. So by them pushing all those big old machines, we're having a three-to-five-point earthquake from four o'clock, from seven in the morning to four o'clock in the afternoon. All day, my house is shaking. So those are my concerns. And they said by September third, the dirt will be gone. It's not gone. It's just moved in the middle. And what they do, they get more dirt, put it over here. They take it back out and put it in the middle again, and that's all they're doing all day. They're not solving the problems that we're having. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Staff members are going to get your information as well.
Can I have your name, please?
Luz Gomez.
Thank you.
Jorge, can you catch up with her? All right. Going to close the public hearing at eight-twenty. Back to you, counsel. Anybody have any comments, questions?
Question.
Mayor Protem?
So staff, in terms of the traffic flow, was there any exploration of opening up Wilson further down? I know it's been closed off for at least thirty years. On a side note, I think one of the greatest travesties the city has ever done was whenever they approved those track maps, they didn't make Wilson, Mildred, go all the way through from Paris Boulevard all the way to Marietta. But I know they closed off Wilson. Was that explored, maybe in terms of helping facilitate traffic, the traffic flow down once these get built?
Counsel, Mayor Protem, wrap. I think the closure was actually done a few years ago.
I think the closure was actually done a few years ago, you know, previous administration.
I was in middle school, it was closed out, we're talking 1997.
That's right, yeah. We haven't actually explored, we can, we can actually take a look, see, I don't know why it was, uh, closed in that manner.
I was on the planning commission, not when, not when it was done, but I heard the rationale was because of police activity in the area of, it, it helped calm down some issues there. But I agree, it, that was back then, I think we can revisit that and probably reopen that.
We can certainly take a look at that.
Yeah. I think it's something if we do move forward on this, or even if we go forward on the 57 units, I think it's something that's going to have to happen. Like I said, Mildred should have been all the way from Paris Boulevard to Marietta, but that's neither here nor there.
That's all. Councilwoman Navas?
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the applicant for tonight's proposal. I, and of course, our, our residents who have taken the time to be here and have been here for a few hours with their families, I know that's not easy, so I know that these concerns are weighing heavy on them. But I had a question for the applicant, how much longer, if I may, how much longer do we foresee the dust and the shaking being an issue?
We are absolutely on the tail end of the remedial grading. We're now communicating with staff, staff has produced a schedule that we've all agreed to, and probably by the second week of October, we'll be done with what we're doing now. Subject to your approval this evening, we'll move immediately into the development of the site. So as we make progress, these dust issues get subsided because we're obviously improving the site with streets and landscaping and so on and so forth. So this, unquestionably, this is a messy part of the business. It's construction. And the good news is that we are on the tail end of it. And I was the one that came up with the September 2nd date, I was basically informed with staff and my staff. But the problem was, we had some weather issues that saturated the soil, so we had to wait a week to let the soils dry out. While that said, it put us behind, but we're going to be very close to being done. And to the residents' comment of moving the dirt around, uh, the remaining dirt that is seen is going to be exported off the site. And so basically, we're getting ready to do that. So we're on the tail end of this grading scenario. And, and I would say the, the community and, and the residences in our audience, they have been with us for several of the hearings, and we've met with them personally, and we've been with them in our community meetings. And we have reached out to try and resolve our issues, and we continue to do so. Uh, we're tendering offers to try and compensate, but we haven't been successful yet reaching a, a resolution. That doesn't mean we're stopping. Uh, with respect to some of these issues.
Mr. Boyd, I, I'm, I'm not going to reopen this hearing. The question was, how long is the dirt?
Yeah, okay.
That's, that, you need to focus on that and you already answered that question, so.
Yeah, and I said, that'd be about the second week.
That's it.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Okay, great.
All right, um, who are you then? Councilman Corona?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have some question for, uh, for Mr. Nathan. If you could go back a couple slides, um, with the conditions of approval, and, and I do want to thank the speakers for coming out. Now, I've, I've had these conversations with our staff for a long time because I used to drive on Nueva Road every day, every single day from the Paris High School where I work at, all the way down to, uh, Skyview where my son was going to school. And I would see this thing at the size of the, with the size of the houses, and I would always ask, nobody's complaining about this? And I never got an email. Keep in mind, I'm, I am your council member that represents that area. I never once got any message, and I would ask our staff, nobody's complaining? Because I would complain, right? These things are the size of the house, right? And then I was told, oh, they're using it to raise up the, the, um, with the level of the, of the land. And I'm, I'm, I'm not the engineer, right? And I'm thinking, that doesn't make sense, it's, like I said, it's the size of the house, so, um, you know, but I never heard one complaint about what was happening until today, the first time. But we could go back to the, um, conditions of approval. Do you, one more, I think there was like the concerns, that they addressed the concerns?
Yeah, let me go to that.
I don't know where that was at.
That's towards the beginning, way in the beginning.
Yeah, it's right there. Okay, so, so they, they, we, we could say that they enhanced architectural treatments? So this all came from the planning commission, right?
That's correct. And they also went to ad hoc too.
Ad hoc as well, okay, and the increase of landscaping, um, and then the, um, okay, so they got that, and then what, was the pool originally part of the plan or is that something new that came?
That was originally part of the plan.
That was originally, okay. And then the applicant worked directly with concerned residents, uh, adjacent to the project site and have addressed the issue, okay. So, so that has to do with the stockpile, so I've never heard that that was an issue until today. You know, um, like, like, I, I definitely don't want to open up, uh, um, comments and stuff for, for the residents, but please, please get in contact with your, with your council members whenever you have a concern. The second you have a concern, because I, I called multiple times to our city manager and other staff if we ever had any, any issues, and, and I never heard one, one issue. Okay, okay. Oh, May 7th, okay, okay. Thank you. So, um, now, now I, I think there was addressed, when, when is the dirt going to be removed? Is that, that's, I, I think he said it, but I wasn't, I heard 7th week?
As I noted, about the second week of October.
Second week of October, okay.
October 15th.
Gotcha, okay, okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, um, the, the plan, the planning commission did recommend that, to, to approve of, of the, of the new plans instead of 57. I, I do understand that, that we do need more housing in our city. I, I do want to bring up the, the issue with the parking though. Because if we notice across the street, across Nueva Road, where you have the apartments, they park all their cars right there on, on that side. And so the question is, where are they going to park their cars at? And I know we have two parking spots per each, per each, uh, housing unit, is that going to be enough? What would happen if somebody comes in and they have three cars, for example? Where are they going to park at?
Well, currently, you know, the, the way the project is being proposed, it actually exceeds the parking requirements. And then also, I'd like to note, the apartment that was approved, the apartment across Nueva Road to the north was approved with the old parking standards.
Right.
So, um, since then, there was like a project called Via Verona, uh, that was approved for apartments, and we actually updated the parking standards to align with, to align with the adjacent cities.
Right, okay. Okay, but, I mean, have we been discussing with those, with that apartment complex of what they're going to do about the parking? Because, I mean, they're, they're going to park the car somewhere, but, but we don't have a place for them to park.
The apartments or the condos?
The apartments across, I mean, if this is built, then those people aren't, aren't parking their cars there, obviously.
Yeah, I believe that Nueva Road, that stretch of Nueva Road is going to be pretty much red-curved along the project site.
Okay.
If John would like to, you know, add to that.
Okay, and, and this is going to be a fenced-off community, so they can't park in there anyways, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Vallejo?
Uh, I just had a quick question, because I know, um, our residents were talking about, um, that the cracks on the retaining walls and someone's gate was falling apart. And I just want to ask, like, for staff, like, do we have anything that can help them? Because, you know, it's, it looks pretty bad from some of the pictures that, that they all showed us. And then also, are there, um, like, conditions to put mitigation to really help repair what has been broken?
Yes, we can probably add a conditionment to do an assessment of before and after, so just to make sure that any damage gets repaired.
Yes, thank you, please do.
All right, uh, no one else is on the, Councilwoman Navas?
Thank you, just one more question, was that assessment not conducted before any of this, of before tonight's?
I defer to Nathan with that question.
Okay.
Yeah, so, as of right now, I, you know, um, can you repeat the question again? Sorry about that.
I believe this is more of an applicant, uh, question. Were there any assessments made to the home prior to the?
The, the grading.
Right, the grading.
Yes, ma'am, we, we can demonstrate that we've got evidence through pictures before, currently, and currently right now. So, we, we do have photos of the before version.
Of the individual homes, of each?
And, and I, I think when we get deeper into this, when we are allowed to step onto their properties, we'll have our engineers, the city could accompany us if they like, uh, so that we can actually fully examine what their assertions are.
Okay, I'm, I'm worried because why didn't this take place before? Do you know, at this point, maybe the damages, as we had pictures indicate that it could have happened, I would have loved to see this happen beforehand.
Well, that, that's fine, but we too were just brought to the attention of some of these concerns. And we've reached out recently to ask their permission so that we can actually meet with the individual homeowners to look at their individual cases.
Okay.
So, we're working on that.
Okay, in the future, for any projects here in the city of Paris, I think it's a great idea. I'm not sure if you do that with other cities where you assess each neighbor's home and make sure that, you know, you're being a good steward and a good neighbor as construction before anything even begins, right? Because I'm sure this is not your first time hearing concerns from your neighbors. So, I, I'm just a little bit apprehensive and I'm upset that this didn't take place before, but we can't, you know, go back in time. But I do advise that any, anything related to the project, pause until these assessments are made from here on out. Um, and that's just maybe one way that we could help alleviate this issue for now.
Councilwoman Corona?
Yeah, well, the applicant is right, right here. Um, what, just out of curiosity, what, what, what was the reason for the, for the use of the stockpile at that location right there?
Uh, well, we, we brought some material, knowing that we had to balance the site, we brought some material onsite so that we could do what we're doing, doing right now, which is basically getting the property ready for development. So, we did have a stockpile of dirt available, and basically, that's the dirt that we're talking about now, that we're almost finished remediating.
So how much dirt are you taking off the site?
Well, I, I don't know exactly the total number of yardage, um, do we have an idea?
Like, is there a percentage, maybe?
Sixty, 6,500 yards is what I.
6,500 yards?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're, that's going to be taken off the site.
Okay, so there's never a need for it to be like the size of the houses and, right? I mean, was that?
No, I, I think when the guy stockpiled up, they obviously dumped the, the, the material on, onsite, and, and so basically, it wasn't a, an engineered maneuver. It would rather have just, uh, dumped the material on the site, which gave us the, the height of the stockpile.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
You may sit down. So, um, this is more of an educational item for, for staff, because I've never seen a project like that before with that kind of dirt. They didn't need, they don't need dirt to build that project, right?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, yeah, we did review a set of, uh, stockpile plans that we issued a permit for, and the height was limited. However, uh, there was excess material that was imported.
That's quite an excess. I'm not an engineer, and that thing was literally, I'm only five foot four, so, but I don't want to exaggerate, but, I don't know, 15, 20 feet high all the way across the entire property? That dirt was not, that was stockpiled from some other project, temporary hold or whatever. What I'm trying to, like, we beat, beat this up a lot, I'm just saying, in the future, don't let that happen. If you have your inspectors out there, or code enforcement for that matter, where's Robert, you here? Then you guys need to be, this is what really, really eats at me, is that we have all our employees, people out in the streets, I can't be everywhere looking and monitoring projects, and why is it that this was allowed to be all that dirt? And I can, I own a pool too, I can just imagine how trying to keep it clean. So, my point is, and this goes to you, Ms. City Manager, you're the boss of these people, we need to address these kind of concerns in the future, these things should not be happening. So, I think my point is clear. All right, if there's no more comments from, I don't see anymore, so at this point, I'm looking.
Mayor, I'm sorry, uh, just a quick one, before we proceed, I still need an answer for all the overflow parking across the street and around that area, if it's, the plans are to red-stripe all that parking, so how would we alleviate the, the comment was made, I'm sorry, and maybe it's not factual, but how do we alleviate all that overflow parking? Is there a plan in place before we even add additional housing?
Well, the overflow parking that, you know, that may occur, parking is permissible along Wilson, but not Nueva. But typically, the, you know, the development, the way they analyze the parking should satisfy.
Okay, and, and this is not for the future plan, this is rather what's happening now, that overflow parking, I'm not sure if code enforcement is aware, or have they been conducting, or is, has there been any talks with the apartment as to what the plans are for alleviating that overflow of traffic, of parking?
Let me, let me step in here for a minute. We're, you're talking about apartments across the street, you're not talking about this project, so I, I really want to move on with this, this, what we've got going here. You had some good concerns, and Robert, if you can address those with her, Malcolm's been bringing this up for a long time, and I got people complaining too, that those cars are parking, they're parking there, throwing trash, blah, 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 but that's not part of this project, so, um, at this point, we need to move on with a motion on the resolution on the first reading of the ordinance. I'm looking for a motion.
If I, if I could chime in, I, um, even though respectfully, Mayor, you mentioned that that's not related to this project, however, looking at the grand scheme of the picture, I feel I'm not comfortable to make a decision tonight until we alleviate, uh, the overflow of the, of that parking, and then until we make sure that the applicant is responsive to the neighbors, um, and like I advise, if they could put a pause on what they're doing now and make sure that they go out to each home and make sure that they document, even if they don't go on the property, at least make sure they document the backends of each of those homes. So, tho, those are my comments, and, and I don't feel comfortable making a decision tonight.
Councilwoman Navas, are you saying you would want to maybe continue this item to the October 14th, or even the October, I think, 28th meeting?
Yes, yeah, whatever we can make happen between staff and the applicant, and, and of course, the neighbors' concerns. I'm, I'm okay with a future date, whatever, whatever.
Then I strongly suggest you make a motion.
Okay, so I make a motion, um, to, uh, bring this item back at a future date, I'm not sure if we need, we need have, do we pick a date tonight?
You don't have to be date certain, or do we have to be date certain, Madam Attorney? I don't think so.
No, you don't have to.
I think the issue would be is, how you want to word this is, you like to bring this back after staff looks into these other, these issues that you're concerned with, and once they're prepared with the applicant, then we can set a meeting.
Yes.
I like the way I did that. All right, is there a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second on that. Or is somebody going to? I'll second that, I got you too.
All right, you guys got the motion down? Kenneth, you good? All right, call the vote, please.
Five oh, motion approved.
Thank you. All right, item 11C, consideration to introduce first reading of proposed ordinance, number next in order, regarding zoning code text amendment 25-00004, a proposal to amend Chapter 19.44 of Title 19 of the Paris Municipal Code to eliminate the option of permitting warehouses and distribution centers in the Business Park BP Zone with a conditional use permit, applicant of the city of Paris. This can be introduced by our Director of Development Services, Mr. Kenneth Fung.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This item will be presented by our Principal Planner, Rafael Garcia.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Vargas, members of the City Council. Good to be here before you once again. Uh, the item before you tonight is zoning code text amendment 25-0004. On May 27th, earlier this year, City Council directed staff to initiate a zoning code text amendment to eliminate the option to allow warehouses and distribution centers within the Business Park zoning district with approval of a conditional use permit. This amendment would align, along with the Paris Valley Commerce Center specific plan, which currently prohibits this option already. On August 20th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted 5-0 to recommend that the City Council approve this amendment. So as you may recall, this amendment would be to eliminate the option to allow warehouses and distribution centers with approval of a conditional use permit. Uh, the amendment would amend the land use table in section 1944.020, and it would basically prohibit warehouses and distribution centers within the Business Park zoning district with approval of a conditional use permit. So as you can see, the red line strike, I would eliminate the conditional use permit option, and it would simply prohibit the use altogether. This amendment would also add a provision as part of Chapter 1944, clarifying that any legally established warehouses or distribution centers, whether already constructed, currently operating, or approved but not yet built, with a valid conditional use permit issued issued prior to the adoption of the zoning code text amendment, may continue to operate in the BP zone as a permitted use, provided that the CUP remains valid and has not expired. With this in mind, uh, the proposed zoning code text amendment has been determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section fifteen oh six one B three, in that there's no possibility that the proposed amendment may have a significant effect on the environment. Now, the Planning Commission is recommending that the City Council determine that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approve zoning code text amendment twenty-five dash zero 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 four to amend chapter forty-four to eliminate the option to allow industrial warehouses and distribution centers in the Business Park zone with a conditional use permit. That concludes the presentation. Staffs are liable to answer any questions that the members of the community or members of the City Council may have pertaining to this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. I am going up to public hearing at eight forty-one. Madam, correct, you have any request to speak?
Yes, sir. Franco Pacheco.
Hello, Council, Franco Pacheco, Inland Valley Alliance, and, um, I'm really glad that this has been brought up to close that loophole for warehousing on Business Park, and it closes the loophole, and we've seen a lot of developers kind of hold, uh, projects hostage with, with excuses on why they can and cannot do things, and I see that this is a good thing for the city of Paris, where we'll be using Business Park for its intended uses. So, I, I urge you guys to vote, uh, to approve this motion to close the Business Park loophole for warehousing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That is all.
All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing at eight forty-two. Council, any questions, comments? If not, I'm looking for a motion on the first reading. Have a motion by Council, Mayor Protem Rab, second by Councilwoman Vallejo. Please call the vote.
Five oh, motion approved.
Thank you. Item twelve, business items, we have none. Thirteen is council communications. Wow. Councilwoman Vallejo. Councilwoman Vallejo, do you have any comments?
Oh, sorry, apologies, Mayor. Oh, yes. Sorry, guys, it's been a, it's been a crazy month, but, um, I would just like to say, um, recently, the mayor, uh, Councilmember Corona and I, we went to the Paris Historical Valley Silent Auction. It's a really great event, um, I bought a few things, um, I bought some really cool things, so everyone, please come share, and to support the museum, they're a really great group of people that really want to bring history to Paris, so I really appreciate that. Also, Councilmember Corona and I, we attended, um, the ribbon cutting to the, I believe it was Checkmate. Oh, Checkmat. It's, uh, for, it's like a studio for jujitsu, and I was waiting for Malcolm to get beat up, but it never happened, so I'm trying to go next time to see him get beat up. But that was really fun to go to. I also want to thank all the residents here to really share your concerns, because this really shows a true testament that sometimes we don't get these messages, or sometimes things happen, but it's really good to be vocal and really use your voice, and please contact us any way you can, because we are, you, you guys have a really good council here that is really open to sharing, and we really care about you guys, because we want to know what's going on, uh, because in that area, I don't really drive by there, so I was even surprised about this stockpile, but, um, I really thank you guys for coming in. If you guys have any more questions, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Corona.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, yeah, I do want to thank all the, all the residents that came out for whatever item. Please, if you do have concerns, please reach out to your council. You know, I, I guess going back to the, to the item, I mean, I, I even stopped by and found one resident outside, and I asked them, hey, is it bothering you? And that, that one person at least, they, they told me, it doesn't really bother me, because it kind of, kind of blocks off people from there, so, that, just that one person. But it definitely would have bothered me, but I didn't hear any complaints about it at that time. I'm sure that there was complaints, but I just, I, so I, hopefully you guys can stay afterwards, we'll have a, a quick conversation. I did attend the, uh, the Paris Appreciation Day, uh, at the Trade Museum, along with the Councilwoman Navas and the mayor as well, too. Uh, thank you for all those that showed up, and, and then I, I also, uh, attended the, uh, the ribbon cutting with the, uh, with, along with the mayor at, uh, our newest elementary school in Paris, Granite Hills, um, school, because it's not really elementary, because it's, it goes from TK all the way to the eighth grade. So, that community, uh, for example, my son, he'll be able to go to school from, from TK all the way to eighth grade, that's ten years at the same school, so I'm, uh, a lot of people are really happy about that. And, uh, so far, they've done a great job, the traffic's been, been great for having the school right there. And I think that's it for events I've attended, too. I, I would like to request an agenda item for next council meeting, or, or future council meeting, to consider, um, you know, in, in light of what we just voted for with the BP, you know, I was just kind of reading and kind of thinking about it, and, uh, asking questions, and, and, uh, you know, I, I do think that, that since we don't, we haven't updated our general plan, our master plan, for a very long time, uh, it looks like we're gonna have to kind of, you know, make some changes, some, uh, policy changes and, and some text changes, uh, ourselves, in there, but if we could, uh, bring an item for next council meeting to consider providing direction to staff to initiate a text amendment to the city zoning change, uh, zoning code, um, change for warehousing and distributions, um, from a permitted use to a conditional permitted use in the light industrial, general industrial zones, um, so that, um, yeah, for, for anything larger than fifty thousand square feet, it basically, if it's in light industrial, it gets, it goes to Planning Commission, it never comes to us, right? So, we kind of, you know, I, I think in light that we're, we are, we are really limiting ourselves on the, on how much land is still left, so it's really important that, that we, we really only bring the very, very best projects, you know? So, so a lot of these developers, if they're light industrial, they, you know, they think it's automatically, but I, I think that, that we still need to have that come to the council and, and still get approved from that, so I think that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Navas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin by thanking all our public comment speakers for tonight's meeting. I also had the opportunity, as Councilmember Corona mentioned, to participate in the Paris Chamber, Paris Appreciation Day, so would like to thank them for putting on a great event for our community. And then, speaking of events, I'd like to give a great thank you to our city staff for putting on a phenomenal end of summer splash event. It was very well attended by our community. It was incredibly hard to find parking, even before you actually arrived to the event, and just seeing everyone in a really beautiful park, and it was, you know, I think filled to capacity, it felt like, and so a great thank you to all the families who were able to participate, and I hope you enjoyed that. It was also brought to my attention that the fall cleanup day wasn't promoted as much as it, uh, folks would have liked, so I'm advising staff if we could go ahead and host another fall cleanup day and hopefully promote this one a little bit better, so that our residents could take advantage of that. And those are all my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, I'd like to thank all the speakers for coming to tonight's meeting. I'd like to start off by thanking Public Works for hosting a successful moch giveaway. I went to this past Saturday, it was hosted here at City Hall. I was in and out. They'll be having subsequent events, I think the next one, Brian, when's the next moch giveaway? In two weeks, and will that be here or back at Rotary Park? It'll be here at City Hall, so you come up, you sign a little paper, you're showing that you're a parish resident, they load your car with bagged moch, you could be on your way, so it's been a very successful event here. A few weeks before that, I was able to go on the, um, Paris hike. Mayor Vargas, along with Councilwoman Viejo, were also present. It was a great hike, we hiked up to the, the hill in the middle of the villages of Avalon, so it was good vantage point, hadn't been up there since we did that hike, I think it was in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, you could definitely see that a path's developed up there over the last seven years. So, I'd like to thank, uh, Community Services for organizing that hike, and all the parish residents that came out. A few items I'd like to bring the staff's attention is one, if Everett, can you bring that photo up? So, I went on a walk yesterday, and this is right over on, uh, the Mercado Apartments, and just was noticing the trees have filled in pretty well over there. If we could maybe look at the tree, the health of the trees, maybe trimming them back from the building, and there are two trees that look like they're leading toward D Street. If we could make sure those trees are stabilized, it would be, it would be a real bad thing if we were to lose those trees. Um, I went on about a four-mile walk yesterday, and one of the streets I walked down was Getz Road. Started walking down Getz Road from the CRNR, walked all the way down to Mapes. A few things I'd like to bring to Public Works' attention, along with Code Enforcement's attention. Shortly after, um, after you pass Mount, around Mountain, there's an unpermitted, uh, semi-storage area over there. They have a fence with a tarp on it. You know, I have no objection to store, storing semis in there, provided it looks, it really looks, uh, they set up maybe a brick wall, a wrought iron fence, it really brings the, enhances the, the view over there. We've worked real hard to put the median down there, it's looking real nice, so if we can work on that. Further down, just south of Malbert, there's a brick wall right before the, um, there's like a, a rock place, but right before that, there's a sign where a guy's trying to sell the property there. We've cleaned our median, but the other median with the, uh, real estate sign, the guy's name's Nasser. It's, it's grown up with weeds, there's rocks in there, and it's just really bad. And then further down, almost to Mount, uh, almost to Mountain, or Mapes, actually, there's a AJ Reynolds. AJ Reynolds has this nice new building, but right in front of it, there's just, there's no landscaping, it's just dirt and weeds. If we can work with them, maybe get some trees out there, get some rocks out there, really enhance that area, because we're getting a lot more people going up and down that road, uh, with the new houses coming up, uh, with the, just everything going down there, both Paris and Menifee. Uh, one other thing, if we can also contact IDI to work on getting Ellis Road, Ellis reopened at Ellis, Case, and Redlands. It spilled a lot of the traffic over to G and Seventh Street, and the traffic's gotten so bad, when the railroad, MetroLink comes and closes off at, uh, Paris Boulevard, the cars are backed up past Seventh Street, where the stop, four-way stop sign on Seventh Street is, and I think part of that is because people aren't able to take Ellis, or Redlands, down to Ellis, to get off on Case, to either go down Case or take the part of Case to go down Getz Road. So, if we can work on them opening that up, I think it's imperative, uh, to mitigating traffic in that area. Uh, with that, that closes my public comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you. My understanding that they're even beyond their deadline for the closure of IDI in Case Road and all that, are they not?
That is correct, Mayor. Your closure's taken longer than, uh.
Is there any explanation as to why?
Uh, yes, there were issues between RCTC and Edison.
Of course.
Uh, that they're, um, I think that's been formalized now.
You can say no more. Just follow up with them, please. Councilman, Mayor Protem brought some really good valid points, and I've, I've received some complaints too, of when are you gonna open, it's been a long time already.
We do have a schedule, Mayor, I'll forward to old council.
All right. The fall cleanup, I agree, but it's not on the city. That was a CRNR's project, correct? So, I, I got a lot of beaten up on that one, because I posted it, and not realizing it was not posted prior to that, and so I wasn't aware, so the first initial post was thanks to, uh, IT to do that, and I shared it, but, yeah, they didn't plan that one. Unless they sent notices out on their billing, you know, and the leaflet, I don't know, but if you can follow up on that, but I think they owe us, uh, another cleanup day, because a lot of residents were pretty upset that they didn't get to do it, so.
Will do so.
Follow up with them, please.
Yes, absolutely.
I got a lot on my list, but I'm just gonna cut it out to the important ones. I want to thank Supervisor Medina's office, or himself, for holding a Women's Health and Safety Resource Fair, was open up to all the, uh, women in the city of Paris, who has health at the Meat Valley Senior Center. I made it to the La Liga Soccer Opening Ceremony. This, La Liga's soccer, they're up to over two thousand members, these are the soccer teams that play at, uh, Patriot Field, uh, well over two thousand members now, that's, it's really growing. Uh, Assemblymember Jackson's office for holding a Senior Resource Fair right here at Bob Glass Gym. Our YAC Committee for holding up a park cleanup at, uh, Mercado Park, I was there, uh, working for a little bit, along with, uh, Councilman Corona. Uh, Community Replanting Event, the Grove Community Church, uh, under the leadership of Pastor Turnage, who represents Paris, they're always helping us out, and they had a, a Community Replanting Event this, this past weekend, did a phenomenal job. What street was that they were on? Do you remember?
Yes, Mayor, they were on Citrus between Paris and Redlands?
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, right there by Copper Creek.
Yeah. Yeah, it came out really, I love that dark compost they're using right now, it really enhances, the plants just pop right out. And then, uh, ICS, we went, we just came back, staff and I, from the ICSI, the International Council Shopping Centers, Western Conference, held in, uh, Palm Springs. I gotta tell you, it's, it's, uh, it was good, we had a lot of good meetings. Unfortunately, we are prohibited from disclosing which companies have, are looking into coming to Paris, uh, but one of the big things I can tell you is, and some of you have noticed it from the bigger one we go to, we're getting a lot more door knocks, people are just stopping by, that we don't even have appointments, and they're coming in, they want to meet us right then and there. So, Paris is on the map, people are really looking at us, so it's really, really good conference. All right, that's it. I'm gonna go to item fourteen, our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Uh, we have the National Night Out, which is scheduled on next Tuesday, October seventh, beginning at five PM at Morgan Park. Uh, also, we have another compost giveaway at, uh, this is going to be at the City Hall Campus on Saturday, October eleventh. And, um, also, I'm very proud to announce that the city of Paris was selected, again this year, as one of the best places to work for twenty twenty-five by the Inland Empire Magazine in, in its October issue. Um, also, the, uh, Junior Master Gardener Program was also recognized as the twenty twenty-five, um, National Junior Master Gardener Group for the month.
Sweet.
Yes, thank you. And lastly, the city of Paris finally launched the Citizens Engagement Module on our mobile app, and, uh, we have a short video to introduce the, the new app.
Hey, Paris, did you know that there's an app that puts the entire city in the palm of your hands?
Yep, the City of Paris app is your one-stop shop for everything Paris. Report issues like graffiti or potholes, pay your bills, check out upcoming events, even contact City Hall, all from your phone. To start, click the Start Request button. You'll see the three departments. Pick the subcategory that fits your request. Make sure the location is accurate. Either tap on the map, or confirm the one pulled from your photo. Now, describe the issue and be specific. Hit Submit, and you'll get a confirmation number for your request. If you want to track your request, open the app, tap the menu icon at the top left, select Track Request, and you'll see all the requests you've submitted. Download it today and stay connected to your city.
Very good.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, item fifteen is our adjournment. Tonight, we are adjourned in memory of Paris resident First Sergeant Raymond Edward Rincon, Army Veteran with the one hundred and first Airborne Division, who passed away on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And just a couple of points about, uh, our First Sergeant Raymond Rincon. He, uh, earned a Bronze Star with V Device, I don't really know what that means, three Purple Hearts with clusters, Purple Hearts, very significant, Vietnam Service Medal, Combat Infantry Badge, Airborne Jump Wings, Air Assault Badge, and eighteen other ribbons and badges from the United States Army, National Guard, and State Military Reserve. His service included the, um, as indicated, the hundred and first Airborne Division, five hundred and first Infantry, after completing jump school in November of nineteen sixty-seven. He went to the Vietnam War, while in combat, he was majorly injured multiple times and finally removed from war. He was taken to a medical military ship and then transferred to a naval hospital in San Diego. After over a year in medical care, he was honorably discharged and retired from the US Army, and that wasn't enough. He went back to the military for an additional twenty years, serving both National Guard and State Military Reserve. Respectfully, we send our condolences to the family of Sergeant, First Sergeant Raymond Edward Rincon, and we are adjourned at nine, eight fifty-nine. Thank you, everybody.